Welcome to the February 9, 2023 Parma City School District Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Ms. McKeon.
Mrs. Roth.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Present.
Mr. Lido. Mrs. Schwart.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. That was our prayer, get out, huh?
Yeah, let's talk.
Dr. Smollett, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor livestreaming throughout the meeting? If there are any problems, please speak up immediately so that technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Thank you, sir. And before we get started, we have a new board member here. Let's say her name's Angela Schwart. Welcome, her second meeting.
My second meeting.
Her second meeting, and a special meeting the other one. So her first official school board meeting, so. Schwart?
As you know, my name is Angela Schwart. First of all, it's an honor to be here, really. It's not something I had any indication would be rounding out my year to begin with here, but I'm really happy to be here and I'm honored. I come to this board as a parent, a PTA board member, a volunteer, and a community member. My motivation for pursuing this spot was simple. I want to help foster the best possible district for each of our students, and I want to help improve the relationship between the board and the district and its community. As some of you may know, I'm still fairly new to this area, having here from Michigan four years ago. But I believe that will prove to be one of my strengths. I'm coming here truly with just my love that I've had for the last four years here, even before my son was involved in the district, and that's it. That's all I come here with. I'm not bogged down with any of the past ick of which, you know, I've experienced here within the community and including the situation that provided an open seat to which I sit right now. I make this promise to you, I will never take this role for granted and I will never take it lightly. I fully accept that I'm now charged with bearing such a heavy responsibility. But I embrace it with everything that I have. I'm honored to be a part of this wonderful district and I promise that I will always do my due diligence when weighing any options I will be voting on. With my promise to the community, I do ask something of you guys. Come together. Come together as a community, whether you have or have had children or not in this district. Just come together. The only way this district and its community can move forward in a positive direction is if both can work together. It will be impossible for the district, the board, or for me to please everyone all the time, but I believe that if you are patient with us, give us grace, we can all join together to move this district forward in a direction that it needs to be moving and we can stop looking back. We can do this, I know we can. Thank you, guys.
All right, Springfield, Parma proud, Dr. Smollett.
We do have a very generous gentleman here this evening and we wanted to take this opportunity to formally recognize that generosity. We actually had a donation from Mr. Jennings of $4,000 in gift cards for John Muir students and I do want to call up Mrs. McKim and Mrs. Karabatovs. We'll talk more about how this came about and how we actually used that contribution.
All right, so I just wanted to give, you know, we wanted to recognize Colton back in. It was probably September, October. Dave Knapp, who works at Parma High, one of the principals, reached out to me and said, I have a student that I had, he has a great program, he wants to help some kids in the Parma City School District. I'm going to hook him up with you, can you talk to him and see if you can do something? And I, he gave me his information, Colton contacted me, and Colton has been leading this charge for a program called Nurish Kits where his goal is to feed students over the holidays so that they don't go hungry. And when he reached out to me, I said, absolutely, our John Muir families would not only be greatly appreciative, but it would completely be a program that would benefit them and our students. And so he put together a GoFundMe page, he raised over $4,000, which we were able to give over 100 families gift cards to take home right before the holiday break so that students would have food to eat over the break when they were not in school for us to supply them. So we are very grateful for Colton. I am grateful for Dave Knapp for connecting Colton with us at John Muir. We appreciate it and our families, every single family, we sent letters. He sent a letter with the gift cards. Every family that I had talked to about it, they were very appreciative and just blown away by the generosity of someone who had absolutely no connection to John Muir, just someone who wanted to do good for some students who really deserved it. He did go to school in Parma, he went to ninth grade at Valley Forge and then ended up going and graduating from Paddleask. So he is a former Parma resident, but did not have any specific connection to John Muir at the time. So we appreciate it. You want to come on?
Come on up.
Come on.
I said he looks like the football player guy.
Oh.
Yeah, doesn't it?
All right, now we need the district one, though. That was a warm-up.
We need the official.
Ready, one, two, three.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, thanks again for coming. We often recognize, chat, this Kelsey, everybody. We often recognize donations and I think we have some tonight to recognize, but to have $4,000 and really seemingly an individual effort, so it's very impressive and very grateful. Thank you again. We also have two school presentations tonight and we did a little number contest and Ms. Andrew Shesky from Valley Forge will present first.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm Janine Andrew Shesky, the principal over at Valley Forge. So we were asked to put together a presentation in regards to academic achievement in our schools and resilient learner information and some recognition of some folks. So I shall get started. So these are our Valley Forge's goals. This year, we are focused on incorporating authentic literacy so that daily read, write, and discuss in all content areas and then the utilization of sort of short-cycle curricular assessments. Last year, our two goals were using board-adopted curriculum and the authentic literacy. We moved past that curriculum piece to these two. And then resilient learner goal for this year is we're really focusing on our restorative practices that we use with our students. So in looking at our building report card and we were asked to identify two areas of strength with achievement. So the first area of strength that I pulled was for progress. And progress, the progress component measures the academic performance of our students compared to the expected growth of students on the state achievement test. And we earned four stars on this and I was really proud of this. This is something that we've never done at Valley Forge and I've been at Valley Forge for 24 years. I've been principal, this is my 16th year. So to see that mark for us, I was very impressed and very happy and grateful for that. You can see by the different content area tests how we did and we were asked to identify maybe an action stuff that I thought contributed to this. So there was a lot of work that Tiffany Stravko, our Herd Department, have done to get us new curriculum at the high school level, which I believe was key to this and our focus on using that board-adopted curriculum with fidelity and our work in our TBTs, that curriculum being aligned to the standards that are being tested on the test for our kids. So we are just in our first year of implementing the math, new math curriculum, so we hope to see those scores grow with that. Our second strength, I chose gap closing. And gap closing measures the performance of our subgroups and at Valley Forge, we have always had a ton of subgroups, unlike some of the other schools in our district. We have a wide variety of demographics and enough students to have those subgroups. So it looks at how they are doing closing the gap in performance compared to all other students. And so there's a bunch of, there's ELA and math in there, but the ones, and graduation rate and English learners and some other components. But the ones that I wanted to highlight out of this were the graduation rate for our subgroups. So out of the subgroups that we have, we have one, two, three, four. Four out of the seven that exceeded the mark of what they were expected to do with closing that gap. And then our English learners, our English learners in, it's actually starting right now in our buildings, they take a language proficiency, we measure them on the language proficiency, and they far exceeded their goal for that gap closing. So when we look at that, you know, in regards to the graduation rate, I think our counselors have done a really great job of working with kids and identifying alternative pathways for graduation for them. And our English learners, we did some restructuring of our programming and how we deliver services to those kids. That coupled with the focus of the authentic literacy piece, I think, really contributed there with those. But overall, in regards to the work that we do, all of our achievements are because we take a team approach to those. Last year, we spent a lot of time with our building leadership team and our department chairs with really building their leadership capabilities to lead their colleagues within the departments. We are continuously analyzing, you know, relevant data as it relates to our report cards within our leadership group and then also within our teacher-based teams. That focus work of our TBTs and really focusing on providing PD, personal development for our teachers in regards to our district playbook and what good instruction looks like and following through on how that's being implemented in the classrooms. And that collective efficacy has been a big focus in our building of all of our staff having a commitment to understanding that every single day, thing that they do in a building and the work that they do with kids has an impact and kind of difference. The counseling efforts of our staff that I talked about with not just data and academic, but the plethora of social-emotional supports that they put in there and the collaboration that they have with our teachers and then the partnerships with our parents with identifying issues, communicating regularly, providing supports, and seeking alternative ways to work with their kids to make them successful. Our achievement area of concern, what I chose there is the tested areas. So you can see that our performance, the chart shows our performance compared to the district and the state. US government and geometry, we did very well, we were above both the district and the state level. ELA 2, we were above the district level but below in the state level. And then you see Algebra 1, US history, and biology, that we were below both the district and the state levels with those. So the way that we are focusing on attacking this, we're doing some work with, we start off the year with analyzing our OST results, our test results, and identifying standards that were weak areas and identifying ways that we're going to incorporate and attack those during our instruction and monitor students' progress on those with our short-cycle assessments. We just did a faculty meeting where we focused on improving our test prep in our tested courses classrooms, so really taking a look at what are we doing? When are we starting the test prep? What does that look like? Are we ensuring that we're using the same level of questioning and the same language of questioning that our kids are seeing on the test? And then also, are we using the same technology that is used on the test? So the different tools that are available on the test site, getting our kids to practice with those well before the test so that they get in there and they don't shut down because they don't understand what the buttons and how to use the testing site. We're also focused on, you know, that authentic literacy, that every test that our kids take is a reading test first and foremost. So every single content area infusing reading, writing, and discussing activities and content vocabulary into their classes, their instruction every single day. And then in the chart on the side there, our level of, our engagement of our students in our classrooms. So our four hearts of engagement where we really want to increase the student-to-student discussion and engagement in our classrooms. And then that student-to-self where the kids are reflecting on their own learning and on their own strengths and weaknesses so they can target areas for improvement for themselves. And doing all this through targeted TBT work and PD time. As far as resilient learner goes, for our first strength, we felt that our Tier 2 programming is really strong. Last year, what we did when we came back from COVID is we did a bit of a temperature check that we call it with our staff and identifying some specific behaviors that they were seeing and then having teachers rate, you know, that yes, this is not, either this is not an issue or oh my God, this is completely off the charts. And so the chart here shows the stuff that is in purple, the bars that you see in purple are what our results were when we reassessed our staff in March and the numbers in red above is where it was in November. So we really looked at decreasing those threes and fours. And just the two examples that I have here is one, the first one is students that are quick to flip their lid and then students that seem to be on an emotional roller coaster. And so we also send out a Tier 2 referral form for our teachers to submit students that they believe need Tier 2 interventions so that it's not just counselors and administrators identifying those kids. We want to make sure that we're hitting everybody. And then again, it's that team approach to our supports for Tier 2 students. So our administration, our counselors, teachers outside agencies, behavior specialists, home liaison, Parma High's Police Department, our parents, all of us working together to identify ways to help our students and get them back to a strong emotional place where they can be successful in school. And then our second strength, we felt, were our restorative practices. We are extremely and always have been extremely focused on the relationships that we build with our students in our building. I put a couple quotes up there, "Students don't care how much you know until they know how much you care." And either we spend the time meeting children's emotional needs by filling their cup with love, or we spend time dealing with the behaviors caused from their unmet needs. Either way, we spend the time. So we really try to spend that time upfront with our kids with establishing feeding and repairing relationships, having intervention meetings, we do this nonstop all day long. We have incorporated the teacher and student intervention meetings so that we can restore, if there's an issue in the classroom, we can store relationships before the kids go back into the classroom with the teacher. We do student mediations nonstop. We run circles within, restorative circles within our in-school intervention program every single day. And then when we have meetings with administration, students, and parents, many times I'm doing them when a student is up for disciplinary hearing, making that a restorative process when the student returns back to school. And our graduation guardian program where it's targeted one-on-one support and relationships for our at-risk seniors. Our area of concern with resilient learner is our chronic absenteeism in trying to get our kids to school. So targeted interventions, you know, working very closely with our home liaison and our counselors, identifying our kids, having intervention meetings, increasing home visits and support and collaborating with safety and security, trying to find ways to provide transportation for our students, whether it's through bus passes, whether it's through bicycle, because we have a great home liaison who we'll hear about shortly, and the bike donations that we get and the social-emotional supports. We're hopeful that next year with high school busing being reinstated with the consolidation that this will hopefully help us out immensely with getting our kids to school. So some highlights that you may not know about Valley Forge. We have what's called a Zen Zone and this was implemented this year. This was a result of a project that our Cooperative Marketing and Media Management students did. They had to identify an issue in the school and how they wanted to solve the problem and so they came to me with a proposal last year, you know, we want to do, create a place where it's a calming place where kids who have anxiety can come and de-stress. And so we identified a small place within our media center that right now it's utilized through the work with our counselors, identifying kids who may need to take a short break in a quiet area to gather themselves and get back on track. And there's like a 10-minute limit for kids to be in there and then they go back on their way. I would love to have a bigger area and one where any student can access, but we don't have the supervision for that, so we picked the media center for that. Along those lines of social-emotional support, we have a staff member this year who teaches yoga and she offered to teach yoga to our staff after school. So we are doing that two days a week, I believe it is. We have our EL program, our English learning program, if you don't know that. We have 18 languages spoken in our building and we have gained 30 Ukrainian students this year. And because we have Ukrainian students and also Afghani students, large numbers of those, we now have partnered with Refugee Response and they are, have started working at the beginning of the year, they were working with Afghani students and then they just hired two people to work with our EL students. And they provide tutoring, they provide translation, they work with our parents so that parents understand how things work in our schools and basically everything and anything that we need help with, they help work. We have a wide variety of clubs, some of them boxing. I don't know if anybody knows, but we have had a boxing club at Valley Forge for probably 16 to 18 years. We have a practicing rink, it's a club after school and it's just a great way for kids to get involved. Some of our other more interesting ones, Dungeons and Dragons. Chess club this year is actually really big. Some kids wanted to start a board games club and then MMA. And then we have a bike donation program, which last year started as a result of, really, I think, us getting an influx of EL students and kids not being, having transportation. And we put in our home liaison, Sylvie, put something out there on the internet and voila, we had all these people calling wanting to donate bikes and that continues to this day. So with that, I'm going to ask Sylvie, our giraffe is to come on up here.
You can just have a seat in the front room.
Okay, Sylvie, our giraffe is, sorry, is our home liaison and Sylvie joined us, I think it was four years ago. And we are just thrilled to have her. Sylvie is just phenomenal. Her knowledge in her area of expertise is incredible. Her connections within that area are incredible. She is very caring but very direct and lets people know, like, what they need to hear but don't want to hear in regards to students getting to school. But she's also outside of that day-to-day stuff that she does, working with attendance needs and things like that. She gets really involved in our school outside of the school day. With the drama club last year, she was our costumer. I think she did it again in this fall, the costumer. So designing and sewing all of the costumes and just phenomenal costumes there. She runs our UBU group, which is for our, I don't know, all the letters of the alphabet, LGBTQ plus students. She runs our Embrace All group. She runs our restorative circles every day during in-school intervention with our kids. She's just a really caring and supportive and resourceful person and just so proactive and finding supports. So we are thrilled to death that Sylvie is on our staff. Our next person is Amanda Lewis. And Amanda Lewis is Joe Cook's secretary, Deputy Principal Secretary in the main office and she's been with us for five years at Valley Forge. And she is just an amazing problem solver. She is glued to our main office and very, and adapts very easily. She anticipates things and solves them before you can even know that there was an issue. She is an integral part of our day-to-day operations at Valley Forge, especially with our monitors, our hall monitors, and with our paraprofessionals and making sure that we have coverage everywhere that we needed. Repositing relationships with staff and students, many times we have students serving their in-school intervention up in our area and she builds great relationships with them. And she's just that great liaison between our building and central office staff for helping us find, solve problems. Our certified staff, our first person is Shannon Hamlin. And Shannon is an English teacher in our building and a phenomenal English teacher. She's been in our district for 24-plus year, 24 years. And she is literally one of my go-to people when I have instructional flash games. And she just would relate a conversation to Jackie Marconi that I was coming down the hall and she was like, oh my God, is this going to be a, I need to pick your brain moment seeing me because often I'll go down, you need to pick your brain about something. Here's what I'm seeing, what instructional practices would be good for this. She's a key member of our building leadership team and has no problem sharing her knowledge with everyone and anyone. She's constantly researching new strategies and implementing them in the classroom. She works in creative recovery with our students, just phenomenal instructional leader, passion for content and kids. And this year, she is also a teacher mentor to one of our new teachers and has a student teacher in her classroom, so. And she's a PEA representative, so she does like it all and I don't know how she gets it done, but she's phenomenal. And then our last certified member is Kim Weber and Kim Weber, Weber is also a phenomenal teacher. She is our visual communications teacher and she's been with us for 28 years. And Kim is one of those people that if you don't know Kim real well, you don't know how phenomenal she is and the work that she does with our kids because she doesn't go around bragging about it. There are kids constantly in her room. She builds incredible relationships and takes on at times like a mother role to many of our students. If there's a kid in the building who has an interest in her program, who's not even in her program, she invites them into the classroom. She had a student that she took to football games because he was interested in photography and so she was teaching him on the sidelines how to take photos. She's run and picked up a track uniform for kids when they forget it at home. She has lunches available, you know, for students, she said, I'll offer them food, be prepared because they're always going to come back for more food. So you got to have it every day. She's a mentor to our at-risk kids and never says no to anyone indeed, which is one of her downfalls because she is, after 28 years, she's like, why is this job still so hard for me? Why am I here every day? It's because she does everything for anyone and she has great connections with her students that have come through her program still to this day from back in her first years of teaching. So four phenomenal people at Valley Forge, we. So four phenomenal people at Valley Forge, I believe.
[applause]
Where are we going, Amy?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Screwed on in there, everybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, any questions for Ms. Andruszewski?
Seeing none, I can say.
Questions or comments?
Comments, mostly comments. So I was really fascinated by the graduation rate changing, and that's fabulous. That shows me hard work on your counseling staff and on your teaching staff, because that doesn't get done by accident. So congrats on that. So what I recall, when I first got on board and went into school and chatted with you and other teachers, there was a thing called the growth mindset. Is that still something that you do?
Yeah, sure, that's part of the continuum of our Resilient Learner stuff. So we actually have a slide that we show our staff. So that growth mindset is just a piece of it, constantly trying to get our kids to persist and with the language that we use with them, persist and keep trying and realize that mistakes are okay. So that's just woven in, we don't necessarily use the words growth mindset anymore, it's just what we do.
That's why I wondered when I was looking for it in your presentation. But I know it's always a good thing, and that you're very good with that. And so keep it up, that's great stuff. Ladies, they'll leave. You guys don't get it. Thank you for all you guys do. Thanks for really doing. Kim, you and I go way back, don't we? Holy smokes. You look the same from the day you first came to Palmer. So excellent, excellent work, people. Thank you very much for everything. Go ahead, Ms. Brant.
Don't be so disgusted.
Not so disgusted. Go ahead, Ms. Brant.
First of all, I will say congratulations before everybody leaves. I'm sure it was hard to pick four out of that staff, because you saw a lot of great stuff about your staff, and congratulations to all of you. Kim, your fingerprints are all over this district, because the work that you and your students do shows up in all sorts of different places. It's outstanding, and if people need something done in your area, you are the go-to. And congratulations on all your hard work, so.
Okay. Now generally, back to Valley Forge, I think what I'm just so impressed with is, you know, your strengths are good parts, and you're building on those. But the concerns that you have, you have a great plan for addressing those, and it involves everybody in your building. And I think that's an important part for staff to understand, that everybody impacts kids, you know, no matter what. And that was so clear in all the many things that you said about how you address the things that are weaknesses perhaps, or that need some extra attention, and especially kids that have social emotional needs, you know? They're not going to learn in the classroom if they've got all kinds of other junk happening. And it sounds like you're working so hard at meeting those needs of kids, and the relationships that you have with students is so important, and you work hard at that, so I find that to be really good. And I'm real interested in the Zen Zone and the yoga, and, you know, a lot of languages over there, too.
Yeah.
That's a little bit of a challenge, huh?
Sure is.
Holy smokes. But you have a lot of good things going. I love the bike donation program, too. I think that's, you know, I don't think people understand sometimes how many needs kids come to school with that aren't just the reading, writing, arithmetic kind of stuff, you know? While that is all important, and that is the core of our job in a school district, there's so many other things that impact how well that can happen, and meeting the needs of kids is really a big important thing. So thank you for all you do, thank you to your entire staff, because I can tell it's a big team over there, it's working hard to serve kids.
What a great job. I'm really proud of the fact that you're part of the Palmer School District.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good job.
I actually just want to acknowledge you, because I think it's really important, you know, number one, that you're giving credit to your staff, but it also speaks, you know, when you have a leader that is, that is willing to acknowledge the people underneath them, they're going to want to work harder, they're going to want to work harder for the kids, they're going to want to work harder for you. And I think being led, I don't know, I haven't seen you at work, but I really, I get a feel that they're the product of leadership as well, so.
They're a bear.
And that's, yeah, and this is awesome, and this, you know, that's what education is about. This isn't working, so you try something else, and that's, that's all you can do. So that's amazing.
Couldn't ask to work with a better group of people.
That's great.
We're a family, we say that all the time, we're a Valley Forge family, and we get through the toughest of days together.
Thanks again to Valley Forge and the Center.
By a mere one number, you have to go set. One number off.
It's a tough act to follow.
For those of you who missed this while she's getting set up, so we asked them to choose numbers, and I had written down 14, and Mrs. Marconi picked 12, which I did not think was beatable. I mean, they were within two. And then Mrs. Andruszewski came in with a 15.
That's my number.
And did not defer, she chose to get the ball first. All right, Mrs. Marconi, we're excited to see you.
Well, thank you. And Janine, awesome job. I feel terrible that I'm following you, but I'm going to keep it short, speak. Elementary does not have all those layers, but the team and the staff takes care of all the little needs, and some of those little needs become big. I'm Jackie Marconi, I am the principal of Green Valley Elementary, and I want to thank the board for having me here today, and Dr. Smilick, and I would like to teach you or tell you a little bit about our school, it's an amazing place. As you can see already, we are ranked five stars with our gap closing and our progress. That sign that's there on that billboard is on the front of our school and was donated by a parent and family to make sure that everyone knew when they pulled up what they were coming into. Sylvie, go ahead. Achievement strengths, well, where do you begin? Well, we're right there with gap closing, five star. Our progress on the report card, five star. Achievement, four star. And our early literacy is three star, which is better than the district. I also put it as one of our concerns, because it's not a five star or a four star. So I'm in a place where I have an amazing staff who really know how to work with the kids, to give them the time and give them patience, and to be able to get the trust and relationship to actually get them to move a little bit further, try a little bit harder. I'd like to go ahead and go on. I don't want to belay this any longer, there is the achievement. Our performance is an 84.4% high index, but I want you to really look at that middle pie graph. If you look at that, our students last year, over 50% of them that took the test, whether it was third grade math reading, or if it was fourth grade math or reading, over 50% obtained the rating of accomplished or advanced. That doesn't happen overnight, kids do not come in that way. That's the hard work of our staff. But if you look at the trend over on the other side, we really had a long way to go with our instructional practices. Because of COVID, we really gained quite a bit. You can see that our advanced group continues to grow, so does our accomplished group, and our proficiency, where we're bringing down the limited, but really bringing down the base and growing those kids all along the way. So it's amazing that we can continue to do this and provide outstanding instruction. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Our concern is a three star, and when we look at our students, even though we have 100% of our third graders achieving the third grade guarantee, that's the minimum. We want them all to be proficient with a 700 score, and at this point, we're at 68.5%. We'd like to get back to where we were years ago with the higher percentage rate of our third graders passing the third grade test, not just the third grade reading guarantee. So with that is our focus, and I love that Janine went first, because I really don't have to explain very much, because it's through a lot of our hard work. But I wanted to show what we're doing right now. Where are we at now? Because it was last year. So with this year, we start to look over here with closing the gap with our kindergarten and first graders. And when you look at this, the solid line being our GV students, and the dash line being the national norm group, the gain for our kindergarten and first grader exceeds the national growth rate in the majority, for the majority of our students. So how are we doing this? Well, it's in our core, that's our core curriculum, but it's also in pie, where teachers plan and implement instruction. So with our youngers, we're implementing echo awareness, phonics, vocabulary, but most importantly, it's systematic. We're now finding these specific areas that our students need additional help with, but we're all being consistent in the core. In our upper grades, it's authentic literacy, not only in the core, but also in other content areas. So it's read, write, and discuss. So thank you, Janine, for saying that before, so I won't have to go too much farther into it. But with the rewriting and discussing, it's getting our students engaged in what they're reading. Why don't you go back real quick. In the middle there, that is our overall growth. We've gone from fall being at 44.2% being low risk, that means our kids are doing very well, to 57% in the winter. Over on the other side, I looked through all the grade levels to show how we're making progress, reducing that high-risk group of students, and we're only halfway through the year. Thank you. We'll go on to resilient learner, which Janine had already mentioned about what we do at school. It's a lot of those different waves and roller coasters that our kids are coming in with emotionally. It's also making sure that our school is a safe place, it's okay, and everyone's accepted. But the other part is, how do we make it so when we walk through the hallways, everyone knows what to do, what do you need to do in the cafeteria, and so on? So with resilient learner, we went for the silver, and we received the silver award last year with 89% of our tier-two criteria being implemented. But that doesn't just happen, it's got to be on the back of, you know, some of the practices that we've been doing. Restorative circles, Janine had talked about, that's where we have students who have conflicts, issues, we get them together, and there are set rule of norms, we talk it out and work it out together. The restorative room, time to apologize, time to make right, or fix, as we call it, fix our mistakes. We all make mistakes. I blew my gasket, I need to go fix that, I need to apologize to that person, I need to make sure it doesn't happen again. Let's work on some strategies I can do next time so that I don't blow a gasket. So last year, we had 12% of our teachers trained with restorative circles and restorative rooms. This year, we're up to 50% of our teachers trained. And in tier one is really where the tier two is right on top of, because if you don't have tier one right in the common areas and what the expectations are in the school, tier two really doesn't happen as easily. So with tier one, we have golden tickets, that means classes can earn tickets for showing positive behavior. We catch them being good, a whole class, imagine that in the cafeteria, recess, hallways, library, and all those areas where it could be very unstructured sometimes, as we're trying to move quite a few students in and out through transitions. Individual students can be caught being good, rewarded, because we find them being respectful, being responsible, and being ready to learn. So you can see the graphs show here that we give quite a few golden tickets for classes throughout the school year, like to see that continue to grow, and we're over with 800 students being awarded with caught being good. Caught being good means they get an announcement on the PA, told to the whole school what happened, you know, respectful, responsible, ready to learn, their name is up there, and it also, not only do you get the public, but then you also get a prize back in the office as well. So our resilient learner concern, well, we need to beef up our, we need to define our tier-two a little bit better, clearly defining what major and minor behaviors are, and we need to put more interventions in place for those tier-two. Some students that need a little bit more support, a little more emotional roller coaster for them, not able to control their emotions as well as we would like. They're still young, they're kindergarten through four, so our job is to teach. I look at our resilient learner as teaching kids. Yeah, you made a mistake, let's learn how we can do this better. So it's all about instruction, and not just the teachers are teachers, it's everyone in our building is a teacher. That's where they help them go through the process of, okay, how could you do that better? Even if you were running in the cafeteria, it's stop, go back, show me what I should have seen, and practice walking in the cafeteria. And that's how we are doing it at our building. So everyone's involved with the PBI, yes. We can continue on. See, we're already at highlights. See? Highlights at Green Valley. Well, why is academics, why do we do so well? I think it's this reading program that we have, reading over a million minutes. This came from teachers and has been a grassroots ever since. Everyone collectively in the building reading 1 million minutes a year. It's our goal, we track it, we talk about it, we congratulate students, acknowledge them for their points, their hard work, no matter how big, no matter how small. So currently, we are on track, because you got to check that, we got to monitor what we're doing. So we're at 523,000 minutes, so that's pretty good halfway through the year. This year, our program is lights, you know, lights, camera, and read, so it's a lot of movie-type themed activities that the kids are involved in. Supersprouts, one student every class per month gets acknowledged, you get a sign, you go on your front yard, which I love to see, because you not only see it in our attendance area, you see it all over the district, I've run in quite a few of them. It's a way to acknowledge publicly, your child is doing a great job. And for that parent to put that out on the front sign or on their front yard makes a big difference, because people keep it up for years, you can see they're starting to fade over the years, but it makes them very proud. And Rainbow of Friends, through our PTA and our PTA president who is here, our first graders learn about students and celebrate students with all different types of ability. We want everyone to be included, we want other children to understand what is going on, what makes that person special. We also have Grand Friends Day, we average about 300 grand friends that day, we do about 250 in the first half, and about 150, and we couldn't do that without our amazing teachers who plan programs, choir, singing, PTA, helping us out with refreshments, traffic duty, and it's a wonderful day to honor our grand friends. Students get to show their grand friends the building, this is my classroom, this is my teacher, this is what we do, and we do activities together for half a day. One of the things that I'm very proud is our land lab, we have an outdoor learning environment. We are known to be the scarecrow building, the one that puts out the scarecrows every year, and it's, no matter where I'm at, I'll say, "I'm at Green Valley," they go, "Are you at the scarecrow building?" And I'm like, "Yeah, we are." Oh, I love the scarecrows, it is so cool. It's our families through PTA that build the scarecrows at home, and they bring them on our fall fest and for the holidays. It is our connection to the community, it's our hello, we're here, we're Green Valley, and we get quite a few compliments on that, and they do enjoy it, the kids enjoy it. I call it PTA school events, because our events are so combined now, that it's not just PTA, it's not just a school event, it's a community event. We have summer reading celebration, we honor those students who give their library summer reading, trunk or treat, obviously, and Halloween, holiday shop, bingo night, movie night, Spring Fest, reading reward shop, which celebrates and gives prizes for our students who read for those minutes and points for our 1 million minute program. Spring Fest, reading reward shop, oh, scarecrows. But we also do reading celebration to honor our students and thank them for all their reading that they do, that we've reached 1 million minutes. It's a day, it's like fun and field day with reading, so they can do all different kinds of reading activities all day through different stations that is taken care of by our reading committee. We're rounding the corner now, you ready? All right. Outstanding certified staff, Pam Panerem, our fourth grade math teacher, you want to talk about amazing. 28 years, you would think that she was a brand-new teacher with just a couple of years under her belt, the way that she does things. She has a long list of things, but I think what embodies Pam is the intent on making Green Valley and Palmer City Schools a better place for everyone. You're very active in the building and district committees, so let me just name a few. Webmaster, math liaison, math curriculum writing, PEA representative, PEA TIPS co-chair, what's TIPS? Teacher education professional studies. BLT member, student council, service crew advisor, resilient learner team. Just to name a few, I probably missed probably five or six things that have happened. Pam embodies what Green Valley is, she's the heart and soul. She makes sure that everyone's being taken care of, she is always responsive to help technology-wise, student behavior-wise, she's one of the first ones there, always trying to figure out what we can do better and how we can intervene. And by the way, she's a mother of two grown children who are here. She enjoys camping and spending with her family. I'm glad you enjoyed, that came tonight and joined us. Our next person is outstanding classified staff, Mrs. Beth Hastings, she's our building secretary. She's been at Palmer City Schools for 27 years. As you can see, she enjoys it here, she's retiring this month, and she would not come to the board meeting, because she doesn't want the recognition. There's just to name a few. I probably missed probably five or six things that have happened. Pam embodies what Green Valley is. She's the heart and soul. She makes sure that everyone's being taken care of. She is always responsive to help technology-wise, student behavior-wise. She's one of the first ones there, always trying to figure out what we can do better and how we can intervene. And by the way, she's a mother of two grown children who are here. She enjoys camping and spending with her family. I'm glad you enjoyed, that came tonight and joined us. Our next person is outstanding classified staff, Mrs. Beth Hastings. She's our building secretary. She's been at Parma City Schools for twenty-seven years. As you can see, she enjoys it here. She's retiring this month. And she would not come to the board meeting because she doesn't want the recognition. However, she deserves the recognition, and I would be very sad if she didn't get it, because we're gonna miss you very much. She's always calm. She's always kind, always helpful. And she comes in contact with everyone every day, the telephone. She could be, someone could be, you know, very upset with something that we did at school. And she's, okay, all right, I will take care of it. What else do you need? Anything else I can do? Just wonderful on the phone and in presence, in her presence. So she has worked at Normandy, State Road, Pleasant Valley, Central Office, Nutrition Services, federal programs, and we are lucky to have her at Green Valley. So thank you so much for all you do there.
Come on up, ladies.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, family, for coming as well. Do we have questions or comments for Jackie?
Of course.
I have a question. Is that a million minutes, is that why people get to like five people in a base?
Yes. That's why we get, oh, I didn't, I didn't talk about some of those things. We like to keep those under the table.
Well, Jackie, I'm running around here. Excellent work. I've been in your building several times for various things. And I've always felt welcome by staff, but you, it's a wonderful little building. It really is. And you've done such a fabulous job getting people motivated to things. Ms. Kerner, is that right? I was close, Kerner, sorry. So, but, I mean, she's not gonna do all those things that she does, you know, without having someone. But you wanna do those things, right? Because your leadership is so good. I wanna make this the best I can make. And that's, that's a lot of stuff you do. That was a lot, and I appreciate that.
Look at her daughter laughing on her head.
I'm sure your mom appreciates, or your mom. Your principal, you know, she appreciates it, appreciates what you're doing. Oh, man, I'm having problems with you guys. So I don't leave it at that, but congratulations on you both. You guys have done a wonderful twenty-seven years, and you're relieving.
It's time. I'm retired. It's time.
But it's sad.
Oh, no. She's got a new grandchild.
Yeah, no, grandchild. I didn't see that, so congratulations on the grandbaby. Those are the best, as you know. You get four others or three others. But thank you. Thanks for everything you guys do. It's a treat to see you here at the board meeting. And thank you for your kind presence.
Thank you. It's on the shoulders of everyone else, so thank you.
If you have anything.
There might have been other important, there might be other things. Sorry, I don't get to my, I just love the questions and answers.
Well, I'll start also congratulating the honorees tonight. How wonderful. And I think that's just great that you brought your whole family with you. Not really awesome to support mom and be here with her, but congratulations on your pending retirement. Although that's a, please come back and be recognized when we do the retirements. Really, it's just, you deserve it so much, and we, we like to do that a lot. It's really an important time in your career to be recognized and thanked for all that you do. So, well, a lot of stars over at Green Valley, huh?
Yeah.
Isn't that awesome? You guys are doing a great job. I will tell you, I always hear fantastic things about Green Valley all the time. And not surprised, because I've known you forever, Jackie, and you're an impressive leader. And I know that building runs really great, so congratulations on all of your successes. Let me see. PBS silver, good. Next time gold, huh? We're gonna get there.
We're gonna go for silver again.
Well, we're getting to that. You know, kids that's, when they're real little, like you get these little squirts, and teaching them restorative practices and to be resilient learners and develop the skills that help them as they grow, the earlier they get those, the better and more successful they can be as students and, and little people. So it's obvious that you're working really hard at that. And I'm sure they all love those golden tickets and, and work hard for them. That's a good incentive. The highlights, all great things that I hear about. But I will tell you, I am a scarecrow fan. I love the scarecrows in Green Valley. Every year, I look forward to that. It's, it's not just the school thing. It is a community thing, you know? It really, I think, draws a lot of attention, positive things to Green Valley. So hooray. Thanks for continuing to do that. And how many years have you been doing the reading of a million minutes?
They've been doing that before I even was there.
Oh, wow.
Oh, gosh. We even counted, it was seventeen years. It's been seventeen.
Wow.
Since two thousand and one.
It's twenty-one. Twenty-one.
Wow. I knew it was quite some time, but I, I did not know it was that long. I think that's, that's a big component to success, so thanks for all of that.
Congratulations and thank you. Five stars? That's very impressive. It's very impressive. It obviously shows your leadership qualities and your staff, the dedication to the staff. And I'm real proud of you. Thank you.
That's my staff. I don't know if there's much left to say, but congratulations. And I've enjoyed the times that I've been with you, PTA staff and all that, and thank you, guys. I'm in the weeds with a, with a first grader, not at your school, but thank you for what you guys do and that I don't have to do it those hours. So that's amazing, and that's a gift, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, from Green Valley.
Jackie, that brings us to information to the board.
Yeah, just a few things. We, we had a great meeting with GPD the other night. I know a couple of you attended. And the goal was really to try to have our community have some input into what the inside of our high school could look like. We had approximately twenty-five representatives, so it was a, it was a nice, nice discussion-based, participation-based evening. We are going to have another, and so we wanna make sure that we start to plant that seed with folks that might have not been invited and want to be invited. We will have it open to the entire community. We're working with GPD to secure a date for that. It was great for people to start to sort of see what the inside could look like and actually have some input into it as well. So that, that's sort of the, you know, bond issue related. The other piece is, it was a pretty big week in terms of school of choice. We notified many students of the decision, so to speak, of whether or not they would be able to attend a different school if they requested one than the one they are assigned. We had approximately a thousand ask to move. We granted as many as we could based on space. It's really important for, for people to understand that, and I'll just use Hillside as an example. And right now, we have about two hundred requests beyond what Hillside's capacity is. So we just can't grant that. It's not because we don't want to. It's not because we wanna be mean. I mean, we want people to, to feel good about where they're assigned and to, you know, be happy with where they're going to school. But we also have always said that consolidation is not about increasing class size. It's not about, you know, packing buildings so they have potentially unsafe conditions. It is about being more efficient. And so we're gonna do everything we can after we get through staffing to, again, you know, really go through with a fine-tooth comb to see where we can grant requests. But it, it just is impossible in some situations. We were able to grant the large majority of high school requests because high schools, you know, have a pretty sizable capacity as it is, and we were able to have some flexibility with enrollment there. We did have some students denied because behavior concerns or attendance concerns, and that's consistent without, we've always approached school choice. So we know that there was some frustration. I've answered as many emails as I can, but I know I still have some to respond to. We will do everything we can to get people to where they want to be, but we also have to acknowledge that in some cases, it simply is not possible. And we're sorry for that, but that, that is our reality. So those are really our two large topics that we were working through this week.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. I look forward to seeing you guys wrap that up. Communications, Mrs. Brox.
I don't think anything in particular, led will be later.
Legislation later, well.
Yeah.
That's another portion of our meeting. Do we have a PTA?
No.
Yeah, next, next time. I was just wondering what was listening here. So Mr. Frejder, do you have something for us today?
Yes, my financial auditors are in this month, and their goal is to complete the audit by February twenty-eighth. And say they're on track, so if that's the case, I'll update.
Very good. Hope for good things.
Still good. Is it still written associates? It still is written associates.
Still right, yeah. Okay, very good, thank you. Do we have anything, oh, no. Any amendments? So I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash six-six, the approval of written record proceedings from the January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three regular, and January nineteenth, twenty-third, and twenty-eighth, oh, sorry, twenty-eighth and thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three special work session, board of education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash six-six. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash six-six has been approved, which brings us to curriculum, Mrs. Brox.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three oh-two-six-seven, approval of overnight out-of-state, out-of-country field trip.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash six-seven. Any questions or comments from the board? Well, saying none. Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Brox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash six-seven has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-three zero-two-six-eight, approval to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Parma City School District and Kent State University.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash six-eight. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Brox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash six-eight has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three zero-two-six-nine, authorize and purchase of piano, Steinway &amp; Sons.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash six-nine. Any questions or comments from the board?
I did a quick, we did pianos last year. These are different than the...
Yeah, it's kind of a cycle, and this is Green Valley and Pleasant Valley.
Just wanted to clarify that first.
Yeah, two different elementary schools. I was gonna mention that, but thank you. These were pianos slated for replacement.
So thank you very much. Good question. Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Brox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash six-nine has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three zero-two-seven-zero, approval of the revised two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash seven-zero. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify that these were just, the professor of all the days that were just missed. And it was always intended that they would be there, and somehow in the translation of the documents in the next, it's simply clerical error. No substantive change in the dates, the start dates or anything.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Nobody's having that? Okay. Ms. Nusio, please.
Mrs. Brox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash seven-zero has been approved.
I want to know if a board member has anything to discuss. This will conclude curricula for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Brox. Job well done, as usual. Brings us to business, Mr. Ruda.
No business items this evening, so unless anybody has anything to talk about, this will conclude business. My kind of meeting.
Yes, your kind of meeting. This brings us to finance, Mr. Price.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh-two dash seven-one, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash seven-one. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brox.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash seven-one has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh-two dash seven-two, authorization to accept activity purpose statement.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash seven-two. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can somebody clarify exactly what this is? Because I've seen a lot of comments where people think that this is taxpayer money doing this kind of stuff. This is a club thing, kids, right?
Correct. This is, the revenue comes from fundraisers and donations.
Right, it's not...
So I think...
So the fund, well, the last, last resolution we had, can you go back to the last resolution?
I'm like being accused of moving, using...
So you see, the nominee class of twenty-six, and the fund on the left side is two hundred, which is not the general fund, general fund zero-zero-one. But the two hundred is, are usually activities that are non-athletic. Something like that. Yeah, if they're athletic, they'd be funded three hundred. But if you, most of the time, it's, they fundraise money for it, or they get donations from different groups or clubs for it.
We missed a Mr. Jennings earlier to four thousand dollars. Yeah, to John Newell.
Wow.
And he looks like Travis Kelsey.
Secondary. He looks like Travis Kelsey.
So it's not general fund.
Right, I just, I just wanted to make sure to clarify that, because I've seen a lot of comments about that.
People, people need to be educated, right?
Yes.
Anybody else? Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brox.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash seven-two has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh-two dash seven-three, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Oh, second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash seven-three. Any questions or comments from the board? And I will simply say, as usual, thank you very much for your generosity and thinking of the Parma City Schools. It's always nice to, to receive gifts like this, you know, that are benefit to our schools. So thank you very, very much. Anybody else? All right, so roll call, please.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brox.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two dash seven-three has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything else to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Job well done. Legislation, Mrs. Brox.
I have a couple of things. First of all, you remember in November, we elected our state representatives, our state government across the board. And I just want to draw attention to the newly elected representatives that we have here in the district. Our state representative from District fourteen, which is Parma and Parma Heights and some other areas outside, but for our district is Sean Brennan. And he is former councilman and council president for Parma, and also nearly three-decade educator of government and social studies. His wife is also a career educator as well, so it's, that's a nice thing to have. And from Seven Hills, that covers the Seven Hills area of our district, Richard Delacqua is our new state representative. And he's an attorney that has also taught law school, and his wife is a career educator as well. And then also, Mickey Antonio is our state representative. And, um, then also Nikki Antonio is our state representative, state senator for the Parma-Parma Heights area, and she's a former teacher. We have a theme going here, I think, about, uh, a lot of education support, which is pretty great, um, for us. They certainly understand the needs of, of education and, um, are eager to, uh, support us as much as they can. I would encourage all of, um, our folks that have an interest in any given area of education to connect with our representatives and let them know how you feel about things, because it's an important part of how they do their job as well. Um, and our other representative, a state senator, is Matt Dolan. He represents the Seven Hills portion of our district, but he was, state senators are on two-year, you know, every two years, we elect half of them, and then the other half, the other one. So, uh, that was that for this year. Also, um, I'm gonna talk about a couple of, um, Senate bills that are being considered right now. Senate Bill 1 is the one we've spoken about before, and in essence, it restructures the Department of Education, uh, in the state of Ohio, and places education policymaking into, uh, the governor's hands in terms of, he will appoint a cabinet-level individual that will do that, and, um, the State Board of Education will be basically focusing on teacher licensure and, uh, discipline. So that's a big change, and, uh, we'll keep watching that. Uh, Senate Bill 11 is called the Parental Educational Freedom Act, and that expands eligibility for educational choice, vouchers in essence, and, um, it's now for all students in grades K through 12, beginning next school year. And, uh, some of the changes, um, are dropping some of the eligibility requirements that had been in place in the fast, in the past, and also, um, uh, some of the requirements that, uh, how they used to structure, um, the conditions for which people could get vouchers. So, uh, that will change, and, or that's being considered for change, and that could certainly impact public education. Uh, so, um, this is an interesting change also, and I would really like to have input, um, at some point, Dr. Smilak, on the bill about eligibility for veterans to serve as teachers, that is Senate Bill 14, and it permits a school district or community school or STEM school to employ an eligible veteran who does not hold an educator license as a teacher. And so that will establish, um, the service requirements, the educational registration and mentorship requirements that a veteran has to meet in order to be able to be a teacher. So, um, these aren't passed. These are just, you know, being considered right now, but they're moving through the committee, uh, process, and, um, so they could become, uh, law down the road. One other one, and that'll be it for tonight, is the financial literacy education capitalism. Um, it requires that the State Board of Education incorporate academic concepts of free market capitalism into the standards and model curriculum for financial literacy, which we already have that going. This is an addition to that. And so, um, the State Board of Education is required to adopt standards and model curriculum for instruction in financial literacy, which will, you know, potentially include the new, um, requirements. And that's it for tonight.
Very nice.
Wake up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There was a lot like that. I appreciate that.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Lighten, lighten the mood.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it was some like terrible stuff in there.
Well, some, they're impactful on public education.
Right, well, there's, that's important that we, we deal with that. So, um, so, um, I apologize, but during that time, I was reading a text from my wife, who's attending a voucher presentation at another school.
Interesting.
And, uh, she's not real thrilled with the speaker, so, and she's putting them ahead, so.
All right, go near it.
Uh, so anyway, that's, uh, so you're all done with legislation?
I'm done.
Thank you very much. That was a wonderful report. Uh, human resources, Mr. Price?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-02-74, approval of the following certified exhibits. Confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, approval of certified non-compensated leave of absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-74. Any questions or comments from the board? When did you start taking this over?
Uh, when Pam touches anyone. When, when, when my name is, is on here, and I'm supposed to.
It threw me off. I'm like, there you go. It's fine, it works. Uh, okay, so in the, uh, anybody else got a question coming? Sorry, I was getting really tired. Um, roll call, please.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwert.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-02-474 has been approved.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-02-75, resolution to abolish one of the positions of administrative specialist of initiative implementation, and suspend the contract of the person holding the position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-75. Any questions or comments from the board?
No, yeah.
I do.
Glabbering a little bit? Yes. So, uh, resolution seven, um, 2023-02-75 through 79 all represent, um, some consolidation that we've needed to do here in our central office, just to reflect the fact that we're always trying to keep resources as close to children as we can, and so each of these, um, is primarily a central office position. Uh, we have worked with these individuals. In most cases, they hold some type of other seniority in the district. We will not absolutely, or actually move them, but they will be in a different position. Uh, we have spoken with the board about this in executive session, as we are afforded the opportunity to do, because it is about employment personnel. And essentially, you're looking at a reduction of 10 positions across the district. We replace those 10 with approximately, or not approximately, we replace those 10 with four different positions, and it's a savings of approximately $400,000 in salaries and benefits through a very, a variety of different funds. But these are simply formal steps to accomplishing those steps that we've outlined.
Very good, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwert.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz. Yes. Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-02-75 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2023-02-76, resolution to abolish the position of director of virtual learning academy and suspend the contract of the person holding the position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-76. Dr. Smilak, can you expand?
The same, I mean, it's the same.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Same deal.
So, resolution in your first figure? Yeah, resolutions 75 through 79 are all consistent with remarks.
Ah, gotcha. I'll, I'll save that. We will not need you to ask again.
I'd be happy to answer.
Answer the same thing. How it worked for me. Thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Schwert.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-02-76 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2023-02-77, a resolution to reduce certain staff by abolishing the position of lead school psychologist and suspending the app, the applicable employment contract of the individual currently holding the position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-77. Any questions or comments from the board? I'm not gonna ask you again.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwert.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-02-77 has been approved.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-02-78, a resolution to reduce certain staff by abolishing the position of special education compliance coach and suspending the applicable employment contract of the individual currently holding the position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-78. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwert.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-02-78 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2023-02-79, resolution to reduce staff, certain staff by abolishing the position of lead Title I teacher and suspending the applicable, applic-
You can do it.
Applicable employment contract of the individual currently holding the position. I might miss the last one.
Uh, second, sorry.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-79. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwert.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-02-79 has been approved.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-02-80, approval of the following classified exhibits. Confirmation of classified appointments and replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignations, approval of classified non-compensated leave of absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-80. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwert.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-02-80 has been approved.
Make a motion to adopt 2023 dash, excuse me, resolution 2023-02-81, classified reduction in force.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-02-81. Any questions or comments from the board?
Again, part of that, part of that whole process.
Part of that whole process. 10 positions down for. That was the second page, so I wasn't sure. All right, roll call, Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwert.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-02-81 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes human resources for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Price. This brings us to policies, Mrs. Schwert.
There are no items under policies tonight, so unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes policies for this evening.
Uh, easy, easily open day for you.
Yeah.
All right. All right, any information requested by board members that may be reported? No? All right, so this is an opportunity to have questions or concerns right into the record. Do we have just the one? Thank you. Uh, this is from Patricia Nemeth, uh, from 2707 Lincoln Avenue, Parma, Ohio. Uh, do you have an email?
No, I really don't.
All right.
When I retired, I did.
You retired? Where did you retire?
Uh, pardon?
Where did you retire from?
I was a teacher at Lincoln West High School, and I retired in 2012.
2012?
Yes.
Been a while.
I spent 15 years in that.
Yeah, went fast, didn't it?
It did.
It did. So, do you want me to read this verbatim?
If you'd like, yes, please.
I'll read, I read everything.
It says it on there, so I thought I was gonna read it, so you, you read.
I'll read it for you, yes.
Thank you.
Not a problem. So, hi, my name is Pat, and I'm here to share some ideas with, or share my ideas with you. First and foremost, I am an educator. Recently, it's come to my attention that many of our first and third graders are having trouble in reading in math. Their time out of school during COVID thing robbed them of valuable class times. Massing didn't help. When they got back, it was a distraction, and this was done by you. Uh, do you want answers to any of these statements?
You can read it, and then if you'd like to answer.
I'll go back, because I have some statements to make.
Pardon?
I have statements to make, as I'm reading it, I'm thinking of things. Okay. And so, now you want to close schools, tear down buildings, and further disrupt Parma education. You want to shove 30 or 40 kids in a classroom and 50 kids in a gym class. Anyone with the knowledge of how kids learn also know that smaller classroom sizes benefit students, especially now with the problems our kids are having educationally. Evidently, you didn't learn anything about spacing and disease prevention from COVID. This is all being done without the funding that's necessary. I think Parma residents spoke loud and clear in the last election. They don't like what you're doing. I think that it's time to rethink your plans and focus on the education of your kids and not your financial concerns. Your primary goal should, should be to make sure your students get educated in the highest possible standards. Perhaps you would get the finances you need to revamp your structures and fund our schools. I offer this as food for thought. Thanks for listening. Okay.
There's also a comment that I wrote in on the bottom.
Oh, in a pencil, it's kind of smushed. So I'm gonna do the best I can. What about, like that swipe?
Operational.
Okay, so what about going for an operational levy to keep our schools open? That is a question. Um, that question, uh, if you, Dr. Smilak, and then I have some comments about it.
Sure. Yeah, uh, operational levy is definitely part of our future. When exactly is, gonna be dependent upon how we get through this consolidation, and, um, as we get through the consolidation, how we are able to save funding, what that five-year forecast looks like. We also have a new budget cycle from Columbus, and so, uh, we've certainly projected how much state funding we're getting, but until we actually see how that budget, um, calculates, uh, we won't know exactly what it's gonna look like at the end of June, um, is when the budgets do. Sometimes they ask for extensions, uh, but an operational levy is, is part of the future. Um, I, you know, I, I agree. I, uh, I wish that we were at a standpoint where we could afford neighborhood elementaries, um, 250, 300 kids, but the reality is that isn't the trend in schools right now. It's not certainly, uh, unique to Parma. Most places are looking at consolidated elementaries, larger campuses, certainly with different wings and different pods, so that you can still have separation and smaller learning communities, but larger schools tend to, tend to be the trend, not just in Parma, but throughout the region. Um, we will ask for operational at, at some point. We've talked about that in work sessions. We don't hide from that. Um, I know you might want to address the bond issue. The bond issue is, is important now, because we don't have the ability to go in November, actually. The OFCC has given us a pretty tight window. It's a one-year window from when they approve their, uh, plan, and that plan comes with $71.9 million. That was approved in September, so we can't get a new plan done in time to actually go for November. So, we understand the community's spoken, but we think it's our job to keep asking for what we think our students need. So, I don't know if you want to take any things?
Right, yeah, so, again, so with the bond issue, as he already said, not to reiterate it, but we had to do it in May or revisit it probably possibly for the next May. So, and our discussions has felt that we had to do it now, or it showed that we were interested in continuing that process. And we are very much so interested in building a new high school in this community. That's something that needs to be done, and it's overdue. Uh, so that's, I can answer that. So, um, the reading, the, the reading and the math, uh, things have all been addressed. Uh, we've seen some really nice presentations here from the elementary schools, uh, and they're, they've all been addressed, and they have plans in place. We're not gonna see those results till next year, but I know plans are in place, and, and teachers are actively working on getting that improved. COVID did suck, I get that. It was not a fun thing. Uh, there are many political things that go back and forth with masks. Uh, we chose to, we chose to do it because we thought that was what was best for the entire school system. So, wasn't a great thing, and wasn't a distraction, I don't know. I have a couple of grandkids who are that age. Uh, they put their mask on, and they put their mask on. It was never a distraction for them. So I think kids are a little more resilient, children are a little more resilient than the parents are, you know, about being told what to do. I think, you know, like I said, you know, I don't think there was a big, that big of an issue. Uh, far as shoving 30 or 40 kids in a classroom, I'm pretty sure that's not gonna happen.
I really pray it doesn't.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think it hap, we have a fine staff.
It's not gonna happen.
And it's, 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 it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen, and, and I'll take that to the bank. And if you want to come meet me later when it happens, then I'll, I'll say, okay, we were wrong, but I, I can tell you that people are sitting here who will not let that happen. So, so thank you for your interest in that, and thank you for your. So, so thank you for your interest in that. And thank you for your interest in, in saying your statement or presenting your statement here for us. I appreciate you coming forward and staying through the whole meeting just to hear it. So that's, that's a win at the Lincoln meeting. All right? So anything else? I'm good?
I'm all about education. I could care less about all the rest of it.
Yeah, well, we are as well.
I have a grand, I have grandkids in your system right now. My kids went through the system.
Okay.
And I'm, I've always thought that this was a good system. I don't want to see it fall apart.
No, we don't either.
I'm hearing some stuff out here out.
Yeah, you hear a lot of things out there about people that are not educated, not educated in what's going on, so.
I'm just gonna tell you.
So educate them.
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you heads up.
All right, I appreciate that. All right, so thank you very much again. Executive session, we do not need that. I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero two dash eight three to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero two dash eight three. Roll call, Ms. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartz?
Yes.
Yeah. Anything's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.